Good evening, welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of September 19th, 2016. Can we have the roll, please?
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Spring. Mr. Walker.
Present.
Mr. Cange.
Present.
Mr. Spinelli.
Here.
Ms. Barker.
Here.
Mr. Strike.
Here.
Ms. Bailey has been excused, thank you.
Thank you, and I would like to note for the record that Mr. Sporhays was here at this meeting. I'm told by staff that he's been alerted to the fact that he has reached a number of absences, which means that he's to be removed from the commission. Mr. Sporhays disputes that and would like to resolve whether or not an attendance at one of the meetings counts as an absence or not. So I just wanted to state that he was here today, if in fact, we're not going to use this meeting as an absence, but they'll come back and tell us what the determination is if he can continue on, or if that, if he's made, Matt, I can't remember what it is, Terry, eight absences, or whatever it is. Okay? So moving forward, disclosures. Mr. Spring.
I have none.
Greg.
I have none.
Brandon.
No disclosures.
Tony.
No disclosures.
Andre.
Yeah, I'd like to disclose that there's, in the case 2016-0101, amendments to Title 21, I believe that members of the home builders, the Home Builders Association consulted with the municipality on some of these changes. I'm a member of the Home Builders Association, and I may, I attended some of the preliminary meetings, and I also build houses which are affected by this code, so just want to put that out there.
Any questions or discussion for Mr. Spinelli? So, Andre, did you have a role in crafting the ordinance itself?
No, I did not.
And I think, given that this is an advisory to the Assembly, I don't see that, I think you're, I don't have an issue with you participating here, but thank you for that disclosure. I'd otherwise say that I have no disclosures, other than I too build, work for a company that builds residential housing, but otherwise have not been involved in this ordinance. Greg, did you have a motion to direct Mr. Spinelli to participate?
I do.
Thank you.
And I would go in favor of that, because I would be actually, would like to hear his opinion from that side of the House as well, so I think it would be good.
Very good, thanks for the motion, seconded by Mr. Walker. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Spinelli is directed to participate in 2016-0101. Moving on to the consent agenda, oh, actually, there is nothing on the consent agenda. Could we hear from staff on case 2016-0110? This is a request for time extension of a previously approved conditional use permit, and this item is not a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, this is a request for a time extension of a conditional use to allow a gas station and convenience store in a B1A district. The conditional use for the gas station and convenience store was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 12th, 2015. The petitioner's representative has included a copy of the resolution with the application. The petitioner is requesting a time extension to commence activation of the conditional use. The public hearing took place on January 12th, 2015. The resolution was adopted on April 4th, 2015, and the conditional use will expire on October 6th, 2016, unless extended by the commission. I do want to point out that the petitioner's application had a different date. I believe they thought the, the conditional use would expire on September 9th, but I believe he was measuring it from 18 months from the date of the meeting, the night it was approved, whereas we date it from when the resolution was signed, so that's why it's approximately a month later. The narrative states that Cook Inlet Marketing Group is not in a position where it can prudently commence development at this time. First, Chevron remains in the process of reconfiguring its new remediation system at the site until the extent to that work is precisely determined. It will be difficult for them to efficiently commence development of its convenience store facility. And secondly, given the continuing uncertainty as to the continuing strength of the Anchorage economy, CIMG is somewhat reluctant to invest the required two and a half million dollars to develop a convenience store on the premises. Accordingly, a one-year extension of time until September 1st is respectfully requested, that's of 2017, so that CIMG may continue to coordinate development with Chevron and better assess the state of the Anchorage economy. The department had no objection to the one-year time extension. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Spring.
Yes, I wonder if you have any information on the status of the site remediation issue?
And I would just say that we're going to ask the petitioner to come forward as well.
Oh, well, that would be more appropriate for them to discuss. I didn't think it was a public hearing, so...
We can hear from the petitioner, just not general public comments. Any other questions of Ms. Ferguson at this point? Hearing none, I'll invite the petitioner forward.
Good evening, Stephen Ellis appearing on behalf of CIMG.
Thank you.
Anything to add?
No, I think she was quite thorough.
So I'll ask Mr. Spring, that he sounded like he had a question that maybe you can address.
Yeah, I was here at the, at the previous conditional use approval, and there was discussion about site remediation of the old gas station, and I wonder if you could give us information about the status of that remediation?
It, it's an ongoing process. Chevron is in the process of redesigning the system, implementing a new system, and that's one of the things we're waiting on. My understanding and expectation is that that new system will be implemented this...
Mr. Ellis, can I get you to move the mic up?
Sure. I anticipate that the new remediation system will be implemented this spring and early summer, and it will help us in our development if we know where the new monitoring wells are and that sort of thing, so that it will be easier for us to work around those structures as we go forward with our development.
Okay, yeah, I thought, for some reason, I thought the remediation was already started.
Well, it's been going on for quite some time, since approximately 2000, but they're kind of taking a second look and approaching it in a different perspective now.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Strike.
Yes, thank you, and through the Chair. At the time of the approval, when it first came before us, there were 15 conditions that were outlined and identified. Two of those conditions involve fencing the lot, especially in the southern portion where it faced the neighborhood. And so, understanding that the delay, you're looking to delay the actual development of that lot, is there any issue possibly with continuing, at least with one or two of those conditions that were outlined at the onset of the rezon?
That is to say, to commence, you'd like to see us perhaps build the fence sooner rather than later?
Yes.
Yeah. I think we'd be, we're just reluctant to make any more investment in the property until we're quite sure we're going forward. The south portion is, well, the only activity on the property right now is a coffee stand that is right on DeBarre, so the entire length of the lot going towards, I think it's Meek Avenue, is undeveloped, so, and there are, there's vegetation that's always been there that's immediately in front of the street there, so I don't think that there's a hazard or an eyesore, if you will, for the folks looking at the property at the moment.
Seeing no other questions, thank you for your presentation. What's the will of the body? Mr. Cange.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In regard to case 2016-0110, I move to approve the request for a time extension.
Thank you, that's seconded by Mr. Walker. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you. I find that this time extension is in the best interest of all parties, supported by the staff packet. There are, none of the conditions from the original conditional use plan has been changed, and it appears that the prior owner is working on a better solution, potentially, to remediate the site.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Hearing none, please vote. The time extension is approved. We have three public hearings here this evening. Start by reading the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at the meeting. After staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, I will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will have 10 minutes. Representatives of groups such as community councils and PTAs, five minutes, and individuals, three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the Assembly, which are not appealable. It's worth noting that the three cases that we have remaining on our agenda this evening are in fact recommendations to the Assembly. So with that, case 2016-0097, municipality of Anchorage, PMNE, rezoned from R1 single-family residential district to I2 heavy industrial district. This is 19 acres, generally located west of C Street, north of West 100th, east of Minnesota Drive, and south of West 92nd. Could we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You've already given all the introductory stuff, so I'll jump right into it. This is a request to rezone 19.01 acres from R1, single-family residential district, to I2 heavy industrial district. The rezon is necessary in order to accommodate a stormwater sedimentation management facility needed by the MOA to comply with MS4 requirements administered through the U.S. EPA. The MOA conducts routine cleaning of the stormwater infrastructure that includes catch basins and oil and grit separators. Both liquid and solid materials are collected and discharged into the wastewater collection system. Current facilities for handling and disposal of this waste are not adequate, and a search was undertaken to locate a new facility. The site was selected through a site selection study undertaken in 2015. The block, sorry, the lot located in the middle of the three lots is the petition lot proposed for development of the stormwater sedimentation management facility. The Clary family, owners of the southernmost property, which is Block 4, Lot 2, requested the inclusion of their property as part of their request. In discussions between the planning department and PMNE, it was found that there was not a Title 21 land use category that described the activities that were to occur in association with the stormwater sedimentation management facility. As a result, the planning department has prepared a code amendment to add this land use category under the I2 zoning district. The code amendment is, is, will be later on tonight before the Planning and Zoning Commission. They will take up that zoning change code amendment. Looking at standard 2, the parcel to the east of the subject 2 southernmost lots is used for industrial purposes. The MOA snow disposal site is located there. The northernmost subject lot adjoins two parcels of land zoned I2 owned by MOA Heritage Land Bank. The Laurel Acres subdivision to the east is zoned R1. The lots were subdivided in 1970, and to date, none of the sites have been developed. Much of the subdivision has Class B wetlands, and development of the lots would be cost prohibited. Further, the attached map, which is in your packet, shows the number of lots that are owned by the MOA and a private entity with the intent to use these lots for wetland mitigation. And moving on to standard 4, the property east of the petition site is zoned I2 and is developed with an industrial use. Property to the north is zoned R1 and is undeveloped. If this parcel is developed as an R1 use, the petition lot to the north, which would be Block 9, Lot 2, will serve as a separation and buffer to the I2 property. Looking at condition 6, the three petition lots have Class B wetlands. Development of the site will result in the loss of wetland on the subject lot. The diminution of the vegetation will affect wildlife in terms of habitat loss. Wetland function will also be impacted. PMNE recently submitted a permit application to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers seeking approval for placing film material on the property with the purpose of developing the facility on the site. PMNE proposes mitigating the loss of wetlands by conserving wetlands within the parcel directly to the north, and thereby restricting future development of that northern parcel. Standard 7, the proposed rezoning will have negligible impacts on adjacent land uses as the rezoning of the properties from R1 to I2 is consistent with current development patterns in the immediate area. Standard 8, both the 1982 comprehensive plan and the Anchorage 2020 comprehensive plan identified this area as residential. However, since the issuance of both those plans, it has been determined that residential use is unlikely to occur. The draft LU land use plan map shows the area suitable for industrial use. Although I do want to stress that the draft land use plan map is a, is only a draft at this point, and is premature to make future land use decisions based on it. Department recommendation, the department finds that the nine standards have been met and recommends approval of the rezoning of approximately 19.1 acres from R1 to I2.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
Yes, I have a question regarding standard number 5 for rezoning, and, let's see, I'm looking at, what page is that on? Excuse me a second.
I think it's page 5.
Yeah, page 5. The way that it's written, I don't find that the standard is met, in my opinion. There's, certainly isn't any road connection to this parcel. Arctic Boulevard isn't constructed, it's a Class 1 collector. And then you go on to say that an access driveway will be built connecting 100th Avenue to the parcel. And if it's going to be zoned I2, I don't think that's adequate, and I think it's really, I know you'll, maybe you'll correct me, I'm sure, but is the plan still to build a driveway, or is the plan to build a collector on the right-of-way?
Through the Chair, Mr. Spring. Yes, it's a, that's a fair question, but I do want the commission to understand that this is a rezon request, not a major site plan review. And we all, once we have plans before us, tend to go off on attention and kind of really closely examine the site plan, myself included. But, yes, the plans have since changed. I believe they are not going to build a driveway at this point. They are going to build a road to half standards, meeting, half road to municipal standards, and the petitioner will have some additional information regarding the construction of 100th Avenue and their plans for that connector road to the proposed facility.
Through the Chair. I understand your issue about the site plan, but this is a condition of approval, so when the commission reviews it, we have to be assured that it's going to meet those standards. And a driveway, in my opinion, doesn't meet the standard. It's, I disagree, it's not a site plan issue, it's a zoning standard issue. And I would, I need to be assured that, from the petitioner, that what you said is going to indeed be true, and that this should be corrected in the notes here, that it's not going to be, we aren't approving a rezon based on what's written in here regarding a driveway, but we're, will approve the rezon based on a full access, half access, or whatever, built to the property. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Spring, couldn't you argue that, you know, as it exists currently, there's, there's no facilities that support it as an R1 lot?
That's true, but this is a rezoning standard. We're rezoning it, so it has to meet the rezoning standard, regardless of...
For an I2 lot, how about for the actual specific use that's being proposed?
Well, it would probably be required that, if they were going to go for a building permit, you have to, I'm over my head here, but I think they would require legitimate access, a full, some type of half collector access. A driveway and a right-of-way, a private driveway and a right-of-way is not permitted, as far as I know. I don't know anybody that's, private development, that's allowed to do that. Do you?
That probably is true. I do not. Thank you. I had a question for staff. On the, the northernmost lot that's also, I believe, owned by the municipality, is, it says, could you restate? I think the use is, that's proposed is for a, is a wetland use, right?
Yeah, yes, you're correct.
Is there a reason, then, why it needs to be part of the rezoning action?
The petitioner might better address that concern, but I think, since they owned it, they just thought they would go ahead and include it in I2, but there is no plans to develop that lot.
So it could go either way. Okay, I'll, we'll ask the petitioner. And the petitioner is the municipality, yes?
That's correct.
Okay. I got a couple other questions. Ms. Barker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you asked one of them. It seems to me that we actually kind of have two different things going on here philosophically. In some respects, this is kind of a technical correction to zoning designation that probably never should have been made in the first place, because the land is clearly not developable in an R1 circumstance, and has not in fact been developed. One question I have is, when the inventory was done of the R1 land and developable land available for, for housing recently, was this site counted in that?
Oh, that's a good question, and I didn't look into that, so I couldn't, I couldn't really answer the question.
And I think I'm only asking that because if it has been, I think we need to go back and make some kind of an adjustment to that estimate, given the housing issues that we have to meet in our city. And I guess the other question I have is, it's easy to kind of get tied up in the proposed plan for what's going to go on, the parcel. And I think in a more pure context, we really need to consider, aside from that, what really is the highest and best use of this land? What is the most suitable way to use this resource, since obviously, it did not turn out to be suitable for residential? And then secondarily, consider the actual plan for what the municipality proposes to do with it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Mr. Strike.
Yes, thank you. The property to the west, that's current subdivision, Laurel Acres subdivision, is that currently fully developed?
No, it's not developed at all. None of those sites have been developed, because of the wetlands issue.
So none of those roads are currently in, there is, it's totally...
That's correct.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strike. Any other questions for Ms. Ferguson before we invite the petitioner forward? Is that, who do we, who do we have from, okay, come on forward? Yeah, just say if you're going to actually use the, we'll require that you stand next to the mic during your speaking points, so if you need something close, keep it close to you. So if you could, state your name for the record and let us know how much time you'd like to reserve for rebuttal. What's that?
My name's Melinda Su, and I work with PMNE. I'm a project administrator, and I'm going to try to keep it short to leave room for questions, time for questions. So, let's see, I have some notes here. Share and cover it, most of the, all the high points. We're petitioning for a rezon of three lots. Those are the three lots there. It's, the middle one is being proposed for a development. The northern one is, proposes conservation wetlands, preservation, and the third one is a private property owned by the Clarys. I don't know if they're present here tonight. No. Anyways, they have not proposed any development that we know of, so far. Well, the, the city finds that these, you know, this is in line with planning and the long-range planning use of these properties to be rezoned from residential to industrial. Let's see, this is a...
I didn't need you to be on the mic, or it'll be all off-record.
Okay. This, that map here shows the proposed Anchorage Bowl land use plan map, and that does show these three parcels as resident, as industrial. And, but one thing that I did note when I talked to planning is that this map actually shows land use and not zoning, and so the, the adjacent site to it is a, the snow disposal site. So it's another complementary use that we are, you know, proposing, as far as the proposed Something to, to point out about the access. The city is working on the development of 100th Avenue extension, and going from C Street over to Minnesota, and our access, we did talk to, I'm working with John Smith, he's the project manager of this project, and we did meet with private development recently to talk about access, and so the current plan is to have a half-width standard road construction off of this 100th Avenue extension. But what we did talk about, too, is the vast majority of all these properties to the north beyond our site are undevelopable lands, and right now, they're wetlands, and there's no, you know, proposed development for them. So to carry the road all the way through, private development, private development had supported maybe a lesser standard after you get some type of access to this property, that maybe a lesser standard would be acceptable. But again, they said that those details would come out during a, a building permit review process, so...
Thank you. Any questions, the petitioner? Mr. Spring, go ahead.
On 100th Avenue, is the intersection with Arctic full intersection?
I don't know exactly what's proposed...
I mean, rather, it's not just left, right turn, right, yeah, right? It's, can you make, come down to 100th and make a left turn?
I believe so. I think there's going to be a median, and the median won't go so far here, so, yes.
Have you thought about asking for, if you're not going to, if the city doesn't think that it's really necessary to extend Arctic all the way through, have you thought about amending the OSNHP to eliminate the Class 1 collector?
No, we haven't gotten that far. We, we haven't thought about vacating any right-of-way.
But you are thinking about reducing the, the design standard on a certain part of that extension?
Potentially.
Which would not mean...
Potentially. Potentially, potentially. I mean, there's-
Class 1 collector, right?
You know, I, I don't know if this is actually shown in the OS and H and P right now.
It is.
Is it? All the way down there?
Yes.
Okay.
The entire Arctic is a Class 1 collector.
I'm, I'm not sure. So.
Okay.
We've just had preliminary discussions. One thing to note is, we're only in concept phase for this project. I mean, we're just in soils, you know, we've had some preliminary soils done so far. We're gonna do some more geotechnical work this fall, survey. We just got a contract for the survey to go out there. We're doing all our kind of background, you know, classification of, of the materials that we're expecting to come to the site. Basically, it's gonna be a de-watering site for all the materials that we remove from catch basins and to support the, you know, our requirements for, our, our permit requirements.
Thank you. Couple of other questions. Mr. Cange?
Thank you. Through the chair. I noticed that you went out to the Bay Shore-Clatt Community Council. I didn't see any letters of support or not, or the adverse. Did you go out to Kotnu or Taku Campbell Community Council? I didn't see anything in the packet.
We did not go to that one. We only went to the Blay-
Do we know that's in there privy? I see they're on our, our packet as being on the Taku Community Council.
I, I think this is, I don't know. I think it's only, from what I was aware of, it was only in the Clatt, Bay Shore Community Council. We did make one presentation there.
Okay. Did they have anything to say adversely or?
They did not say anything specifically against the rezone. Of course, they were more concerned about, you know, if they were to build their future house next to it, but that, just, that, out of everybody that we sent notices to, there was one couple that did show up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Walker?
Thank you. Through the chair. So, this is being called a stormwater sedimentation management facility. So does that mean you're gonna suck all the junk out of the storm drains with a vector truck, and then you're gonna dump vector trucks on the site and pile up dirt? I mean, is that really a, is that a layperson's description of what's gonna happen here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think sedimentation got in there somewhere, but it's actually just sediment, stormwater sediment management facility.
So my understanding of how this works is they dump the truck, they push it into a big pile, and the water runs out of it, and, so you're just, that's really what you're doing?
Yes. This is, essentially, we're de-watering the grits and gravels and sediment that we remove from the catch basins and the manholes and-
Will they remain on-site indefinitely?
No, no. So this is just a, a site to process and de-water the materials. And what we're actually looking for is like a tilted, a very, very gradually tilted concrete slab, and, you know, with, you know, slotted drains and various, you know, we, again, it's just concept. We, we've actually looked at different facilities around, like 11 facilities down in Washington State, to get an idea how they, you know, how they have set up a site like that. They actually have like a canopy, open canopy cover, like a pre-manufactured building canopy cover. But, but yes, it's simply that type of process. Once the materials are dewatered, we would, again, gather them and haul them off to the landfill or another, you know, site that accepts materials.
So, a lot of this work, my understanding is it's done, there's a private contractor in town that does a lot of the work for AWU, and then I think AWU has some of their own trucks. Will this be only for AWU trucks, or will it be for the private contractor?
That's a really good question, because this is really just for street maintenance. So AWU at King Street has their own facility that can handle septicage and sanitary sewer waste. We're exclusively looking at only handling, you know, non-domestic waste.
Okay.
Currently, there's, there's, there's been an opportunity for us to use the AWU site for, you know, it's, certain times, we discharge the water into their system, and then we have a different place that we've been managing it at Northwood.
Okay.
But yeah, it's not an AWU facility.
So, you can probably see where I'm going with this. I guess I'm trying to get a rough idea of what the traffic is gonna be in and out of the site.
Yeah, we, you know, our street maintenance crews, they said they, they operate three vector trucks, and then they have a contractor like Alaska Stormwater Waste, and then they operate three trucks. They said they would make like three trips a day per truck. So they operate some time between May and October, but usually maybe somewhere more like June to August is their peak, peak times of use. So, you know, you might get something like 20 trucks or, or, you know, more a day hauling it in.
Okay.
But then, after you're hauling it out, you have significantly less waste because it's dewatered hauling it out. I estimate it's, from their records, they said they've hauled out like 300 to 700 tons, different, you know, they've had like seven years of data, 300 to 700, 700 was their, you know, largest amount of data or tonnage, you know, and so 70, 700 could be, you know, 70 trucks leaving in two weeks hauling it out, you know, so more compressed schedule leaving probably than coming.
Okay. So, I'm gonna ask two questions in one here. Why rezone the conservation area and why rezone the Clary property? Just for consistency of, of use?
Well, you know, the, the land use plan map show those as industrial. We bought the two properties together. The city bought the two properties together. I think we're just consistently handling it together. The Clarys seemed interested. They probably recognized that there is no opportunity to develop it as residential. So, given the opportunities that they're seeing of, of, you know, maybe having access now, I, I can't speak for them, but we did invite them, and then for us, we just own the two, so we went ahead and did both of them.
Okay.
Treat them the same, especially will be consistent with the land use plan map.
Okay. One more question through the chair, if I may. There are some settling ponds or some kind of wet areas to the north of the snow storage site. Do you, can you tell us what those are?
You know, I don't really know if it has something to do with the snow disposal site or not, but, you know, once the snow dispos, once the snow melts, it has to go somewhere. So it's probably part of its, its treatment before it's, you know, part, part of the treatment, just probably a natural treatment. I, I don't know all the details, but it is on the same site. I'm, I'm assuming it has, you know, there's a lot of water, snow melt that comes off of it, has to be managed and going somewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spring, and Mr. Spinelli.
Yeah, real quick question. Though, so there'll be some, basically, sediment on-site. How does it typically prevent re-intrainment of the sediment in the air, high winds and whatever? Is there something that you do to-
Well-
Prevent that?
You know, there's different things that we've seen that have been used down in the Lower 48. They use a lot of these concrete blocks that they, they can build up in reconstruction, move them around as, as kind of like barrier blocks, kind of retainage. You know, that's one way that they kind of push them around. But mostly, you know, it's, it's, it's getting the water out of it. And one of the sites that we saw actually had kind of these stop logs of different places to slow the water down in, in a channel. And, you know, de-watering it, it just takes time and, and having the proper slope and having a canopy and keeping it dry is, is, is one way.
And just one other question through the chair regarding the oil and grit separation material. I'm sure there's volatile organic compounds that are on the site or in the water. Is, is that true? Is that, and you typically treat that how?
Well, you know, it's, from all the tests of the waste characterization tests that we've taken so far in sampling, nothing is exceeding, you know, regulatory limits, you know, as far as the concentrations of it. Yes, there's, there's trace VOCs in this waste, waste stream at some point, but there's gonna be different hoppers for different waste streams. Like what we pull out of the OGS, the oil and grit separators, is probably gonna be handled in a separate bay than, than maybe just the catch basin waste.
And, and treated somehow and contained on site?
But again, it's all going to be, you know, managed so that it's dewatered. Oh, good thing to point out, the, the discharge that's dewatered is actually proposed to be entered into the sanitary sewer. So it will be, that's something that we would have to get a discharge permit with AWU, so that it will be managed and handled, you know, ultimately at Warren's point, Warren's Off Plant.
And, and just so that we don't talk about a very conceptual development at this point rather than a rezone, I, I guess I would add that you have in front of you a proposed ordinance that deals with those specific uses and how you deal with it. So I just would maybe direct you to that as well.
I was just taking advantage of her expertise. I'm not sure she'll be here for that particular ordinance.
Very good. You're double-dipping then. Mr. Spinelli, then Ms. Barker, then I'd love to get to a public hearing.
Yeah, through the chair. Is there a reason that you don't access the 96th Avenue right-of-way?
Yes. My understanding is, is that's not acceptable access from C Street. There's restricted access from that type of corridor. Right now, there is limited maintenance access that is gated, and that's just so that maintenance crews can go in and check those sedimentation ponds. And there's a weir there, but it's not proposed for-
One more quick one. Have, have you approached the Corps of Engineers about what I'm assuming is a lot of fill in the wetlands?
With what?
A lot of fill in the wetlands?
Yes, yes. We are talking. We, we've already submitted, that was in Ms. Ferguson's report. We've already submitted a core application. It's under public notice right now.
All right, thank you. That's all.
Ms. Barker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What's the consequence of the no-project alternative?
This is a requirement for the city to come up with a, a site to manage this waste stream. You know, it's, right now, the street maintenance is using Northwood site, and it's, it's not appropriately designed to handle and the amount of materials that we're doing. And we wanna manage it appropriately. And, you know, that's why we're doing the research that we're doing by going down to Lower 48 and looking at the pros and cons of what works and what doesn't work, and how best to, you know, manage this type of facility. So we need a place, and we did do a site selection. You know, we started off with a big GIS map of all the different potential properties and narrowed it down, and, and we do feel that this is the best, you know, one of the best facilities, locations that it can be.
What happens if we don't comply with the requirement? I'm just trying to increase our understanding of the whole, whole construct here.
Mm-hmm. Look, you know, I, Kristi Bischofberger, she's the head of our, not wetlands, but watershed, thank you, watershed group. And, you know, right now, we're already strained in, in our obligations. I think we've said we need to come up with a site within five years of signing, and, and we're close to not even, I don't know. We've got obligations, put it that way. Like, right now, that was our, you know, using this Northwood site, asking AWU to go to their site and, and drop off discharge when we can, those are kind of the best we can do at the moment. We've actually received a letter from AWU, AWU a couple of years ago that says, you guys gotta go find your own site. You know, we just, we don't wanna handle the potential grit that's gonna enter our system.
Mr. Chair, maybe we could just go on to the public hearing. If I wanna come back to this, we can.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Su, thank you. You have six minutes for rebuttal. We'll see if anyone has any public testimony. Stay close. Anyone wishing to testify on this case here this evening? Come on forward, please, ma'am. Might need to move that mic over, and please state your name for the record.
My name is Coco Mikel, and I live on 92nd Avenue.
Can you spell your last name for us?
Mikel, M-I-K-E-L. First name is Coco, K-O-K-O.
Thank you.
And I was not planning to do this, but after I listened to those explanations, anyway, I, I have a concern of this project. I take my dog for a walk through this area. It's a beautiful wild nature and very peaceful, and it's a really bogland. And sometimes, and there's a pond next door to this area, a very small pond. I think it's something to do with AWU, but I can see those many wildlife there, moose and migratory birds, swans and sunlit cranes, geese and ducks. And my concern is, if this project goes ahead, it might interfere the quality of the water and area and ecosystem, and that would be a pity, because this is only the one, one of the few places in Anchorage Bowl which obtains a beautiful nature. So I really wanted to consider about this fact. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing none, I'd invite the petitioner back. If you, if there's anything you'd like to add, or if there's other questions, you've got plenty of time.
My name is Kristi Bischofberger. I'm watershed manager for Anchorage. The pond that was referred to, I think it was a question through the chair and also from testimony, is actually a constructed wetland to manage the water from the snow disposal site. So it's actually something that we maintain, and we do try to keep it looking good, and I'm glad that it's an amenity to the neighborhood, but it is actually a stormwater management facility.
Great. Thank you. And I guess I would just ask if there's any rebuttal to the testimony that you heard here this evening, or add a question as to whether the municipality has any designs on its wetland, particularly to the north of here, ever being open for public access or not? And there's one other question for you in the queue.
You know, like, right now, whether this parcel to the north is used as mitigation for this site, or it may even come into play on mitigation for 100th Avenue, but it's fully the intent to make it a conservation easement. And the cities with HLB, you know, we intend to actually, you know, with all the other various properties that we own, we've, there's lands that have been, the smaller residential properties have been donated or we've purchased, you know. So between that parcel to the north and some of these, the other various parcels, it's all the intent to make those conservation easements. You know, I don't think we're gonna restrict anybody from using it if it's, there's, there's no reason for us to fence it or anything. It'll just be on record documented.
Great. Thank you. I have one, one other question for you. Mr. Strike, go ahead.
Thank you, and through the chair. And this is kind of follow-up to the question from your coworker. And this was, can the two sites complement each other? You've got one that's used for the water runoff, you said, through the snow removal. Well, it's not being used in the wintertime. So you've got a large site here already in place handling sediment, sedimentation and runoff, and the other one is, you don't need the access for the, from the snow removal side in the winter. It seems like these two sites might be combined
Yeah.
To a facility type that's already half-built, half-in-place.
Yeah, that's a good observation. We do feel that these are very complementary, you know, public facility- Um, we do feel that these are very complementary, you know, public facilities, whether they can actually be used, you know, sometimes people say, oh gosh, the snow, if on a heavy year, that may not melt until, you know, later in the season, do you know more about that?
We did consider that, in fact, that was my first choice when we were going down this road. However, we have snow years like we had a few years ago where the snow actually was still in the snow disposal site when it was getting ready to snow again. So we can't depend on that. And the other thing is, we, we set the snow disposal sites up to melt and drain in a particular way, they're not accidental. And what we need for the disposal site for the OGS and catch basin waste is an entirely different kind of setup. Now, if the site were large enough and we could have both of them side by side, that would be great and then we could use the constructed wetlands and everything else, but we had to let go of that in order to meet the compliance deadline for this particular mandate. So we started looking around for sites and this particular one is what we landed on.
So both sites will, will generate water runoff that will intent to go into the AWWU system?
Well, no, the, the snow disposal site drains into the constructed wetlands and then ultimately into Campbell Lake. The OGS catch basin waste stream will go to AWU.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Are there any planned mitigation steps or BMPs that will be in place, and this is probably a good question for you, um, that will mitigate any potential runoff from the, around the boundaries of the site, like are you going to leave green space at the boundaries? Or is there going to be, I know with these snow dump sites, they require berms to, you know, basically act as a BMP to keep the moisture on site, that kind of thing?
Through the chair, yes, the design will consider all of those things. We don't have the design in place yet to share with you, but we will make sure that the, there's a buffer and a protection zone and, and also any kind of catchment that would be required for a system like this.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Strike, and then hopefully we can put something on the table.
This is for staff because that raises the question, you have industrial land now adjoining residential. Is there a buffer zone requirement between these two zoning areas? There is no street, there is no plat, is there a, what type of buffer zone do we look at because is this going to become, I was here first, you take it as it is, or are we going to create a demarcation zone, a buffer zone between the residential and industrial?
The, through the chair to Commissioner Strike, the, uh, there actually will be a buffer zone along that portion of it, but I would also note that the residential area that's there is purely a paper plat, it will virtually never develop as residential. It will be, in fact, even now, Heritage Land Bank is buying up many of those parcels to relieve the owners of those paper plats from the property taxes that are associated with them. So they, they are wetland, it is a wetland area, it's highly unlikely it'll ever develop as residential land. And additionally, there is a requirement, uh, under new Title Twenty-One of a significant buffer area between I-2 lands and adjacent residential.
So who, who did you say was buying up this land?
Heritage Land Bank.
Heritage Land Bank, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, the public hearing is closed, what's the wish for the body? Mr. Spring.
Yes, I moved, uh, recommend approval of the rezone of approximately nineteen point zero one acres from R1 District to I-2 Heavy Industrial District.
Thank you, Mr. Spring, second of Mr. Cange, go ahead.
Yes, I find that, um, I'm going to support the motion, um, the rezone does not have any major conflicts with the surrounding properties and particularly the R, I, R1 zone land to the west, which is according to staff and my understanding that is not able to be developed due to severe wetland constraints. Um, and second, that the MOA industrial land use study shows a shortage of, a severe shortage of industrially zoned land, um, within the Anchorage Bowl in particular, and that the rezone meets the standards of rezoning, um, with the caveat or understanding that the access to the lot will not be a, a simple driveway access as stated in the staff report and that it will meet the, um, taking consideration that the Arctic Boulevard right-of-way is classified as a Class One collector.
Thank you, Mr. Spring, any additional comments? Mr. Strike?
Yes, I'm, I will also be supporting the motion, but I would also, I'd like to identify because this came up in this last week, that we have two petitioners making two requests for rezoning and I think it should be either noted that we are intentionally voting to approve both concurrently as opposed to separate motions.
Yeah, I, um, is the intent that we have one motion that carries both, or does, does the, the other, the, we have the authority to act as the petitioner, the municipality does, on behalf of the other?
Because there are two separate and distinct petitioners.
There, there are two petitioners here, but in fact, a rezone is independent of petitioners, to be honest. And, for example, if, if fifty-one, if the municipality were looking to rezone an area specifically, if fifty-one percent of the people in that zone agree to it, then it's re, it's, the entire zone's rezoned, even though there may be people opposed to it. In this case, all petitioners are in favor of it, the, the rezone is a rezone of its own action, it is not a rezone that's dependent upon individual petitioners.
I just didn't want this to come back on us later.
Thank you, Mr. Strike, any, anything else? Mr. Cange?
Thank you, through the chair, I'd just like to add the findings that the I-2 zoning designation is appropriate for the areas, it maintains the industrial land use pattern as established and, or, and in support of the Anchorage Twenty Twenty Comprehensive Plan and the Giraffe Land Use Plan Map.
Thank you, Mr. Cange, and I too will support the rezone, I do want to note that we heard one member of the public testify this evening opposed. Uh, I believe that the additional wetlands in the area does provide for significant wetland and wildlife habitat and importantly, I think the proposed use of this lot that's really driving the rezone is extremely important to the overall municipality of Anchorage. And with that, please vote. And that rezoning is approved or recommended for approval to the Assembly. Hoping we can keep on going unless people really need a break, but we'll, we'll have at it, case twenty sixteen, zero one, zero one, an ordinance amending Anchorage Municipal Code Title Twenty-One, uh, various, uh, sections, text amendments, table of allowed uses to add duplexes and allowed use in the R4 district, proposal to allow larger garages on larger lots, to allow private aircraft hangars at legal airstrips, and to establish minimum area required and the method for measuring window area. Could we have a staff report, please?
Uh, through the chair, to the commission, um, as staff on this particular case, I would like to note that, uh, we have a, we've been now working with Title Twenty-One for about nine months and it, it really came into consistent use at the beginning of this year, two thousand and sixteen, and there are a number of things that have, have come up, uh, that have both caught us off-guard and things that we knew that were actually in code, that we were going to have to address as we move forward. So we're now trying to identify those as we go along, we're trying to group them into reasonable-sized packages without maybe too many, but also not trying to bring them forward as one piece at a time and to begin addressing them. So I will go ahead and, and start at the beginning of this one, the first portion of the, this code amendment has to do with the text amendments themselves and that's that the code was originally intended to go into effect on January one of two thousand and fourteen. It was put off for a year, then it was given an allowance of going concurrently, you could use new Title Twenty-One or you could use the old Title Twenty-One for the year of two thousand and fifteen, and it's come into full force in two thousand and sixteen. So, really, we've only had nine months of testing on this code at this point, but the text amendment section essentially, uh, had two items in it that were key to how, to, to being able to address changes as they came up. The first one was that code amendments would only come forward twice a year, in other words, you, two times a year, you could bring code amendments forward to the Assembly or to, through the Planning and Zoning Commission to the Assembly. And I think it was, the intent of that was that the, the frequency of those code amendments wouldn't be such that, that that would be a big deal and they allowed for three years for that to go on, from two thousand and fourteen through two thousand and seventeen, or into two thousand, through, through two, two thousand and fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. So that would have finished on, in January of two thousand and seventeen. So, our original intent was to simply make it so that that three years was ongoing. So given that this is the first year we've really had it fully enforced, it would go for three years, in which case, that would go through two thousand sixteen, seventeen, through, it would, basically would end on January one of two thousand and nineteen. But then others noted that, you know, under old Title Twenty-One, there was no such provision for only coming two times a year and, and it really wasn't, it just wasn't a big deal. Well, there wasn't a real reason that anyone could really come up with why that was really an important thing. And so, what you see in there now is it basically deletes that requirement to only come two times a year and it allows us to address them as they come up. And, and I would note that this has been really important, we've now had a couple cases where, where, for example, ANTHC, where failure to have acted on a code problem would have postponed construction for an entire year and it would have been a multi-million dollar mistake based on an error in Title Twenty-One. Uh, we're dealing with one right now on UAA, but it's, it's all over, is that the new code simply failed to allow for the fact that PLI lands or uses on PLI lands had storage needs. So for example, UAA doesn't, it, it's not an allowed use to have a storage area for a hospital or for schools or for universities or even for us. So for example, the bus barn, the school bus barn at, out by the public works area, that's not in legal use under new Title Twenty-One. So, we've identified a number of these things that just have to get taken care of and moved forward. Um, one of the, one of the other pieces then is that the Assembly had the ability for kind of emergency situations that were clearly identified as mistakes to act on that independently of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that would be terminated now on January one of two thousand and seventeen after really only one year of being in place. And we'd like to extend that for the original intent of another two years so that it would be in place for three years. It's my goal to bring all of these changes to you and in fact, there's I think a good example of an, one that you could identify as simply a mistake and that's the, the R2 or the, the duplex in the R4 zone is, is fairly clearly just a mistake that could go directly to the Assembly, but these things do have planning implications and by coming both to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to the, the Assembly, there are two public hearings that the public has an opportunity to participate in, so to deal with these things and we can air them out a little bit more clearly, I think, by addressing it this way. So that addresses the two, um, uh, changes to, to the text amendments for Title Twenty-One. So, the next one that you see in there is the ability to allow duplexes in an R4 zone. When Title Twenty-One was first undertaken, that was not, both the single-family and duplex were not allowed in the R4, but through the public process, it became clear that those two were desirable in that R4 zone. And when you read the purpose in that R4 zone now, you'll see that it's predominantly intended for higher-density homes, but includes single-family and duplexes and triplexes. And when you go to the table, however, you'll notice that the, that, the P that allows that to be an allowed use in that zone is absence. So this is a simple correction to address that. Single-family, they are, that is an allowed use in the zone, it was picked up, but the P is missing for the duplexes. The next item then is the garages and carports and this has been raised by a number of people in the community since new Title Twenty-One was implemented. And the issue that's associated with that is that under old Title Twenty-One, you could have a garage or a carport equivalent to one hundred percent of the principal use on the site, not principal structure. So it didn't, it doesn't equate exactly and it was always a little difficult to actually figure that out, but what, what we have found is that there are a number of users in the community who'd like to have the larger garages that were allowed under old Title Twenty-One and one of the principal, one of the ideas of, of, of making it so that you couldn't have larger garages was an underlying concern that people might use them for illegal home occupations. And what we find is that there are a lot of people who have home shops, who are car collectors, who are any number of things, who legally have been wanting to have these larger garages and that the, the real, um, uh, frequency of, of illegal use, we went for decades with the old garages at the size that they were and it just hasn't been that common. If there's an illegal use, there's another avenue to address that and that's through code compliance. So, we've, we've modified these, um, the larger garages aren't allowed in all of the zones in the community, they are allowed on larger lots, smaller lots maintain the requirement for the fifty percent use or, or maintain that, especially higher density. The, the R2M, R3, R4, all maintain the, the newer requirements for smaller garages. So for example, if you build your single-family or home on those, those lots designed for higher density, you do have to comply with the small, the requirement for the smaller So, those are required, those are changes that were brought forward based on a number of people who've come to us over the course of this nine months now, identifying what their uses are and why it's important to them and, and we've had to take a close look to see, you know, what is the impact to the community of having these. We've had them for a long time and it's our desire to continue to allow them in the larger The next item then is the case of aircraft hangars, private residential, and old code never addressed this. Uh, there was a policy that was put in place, but under old code, uh, a lot of the things that were identified as problems never were brought forward to actually be corrected by the, within code, they simply got policy changes that got sort of deeper and deeper where, yeah, virtually had to have almost a separate book to be able to follow all of the policy changes that had modified Title Twenty-One of old Title Twenty-One. So it's really our goal to try to get as many of these things firmly placed into Title Twenty-One so it's clear to everybody what they are. So the hangars is just one that was overlooked, it, it follows exactly the policy that's been in place for the municipality now for a number of years, it simply codifies it in Title Twenty-One. So then we get into the standards for windows and those have probably been one of the more controversial changes to Title Twenty-One that we've dealt with in the past nine months. And we went back out to take a really close look, in fact, we surveyed sixty homes in different neighborhoods of Anchorage just to test, what do homes have for window areas? And what we found is that the older and the larger homes tend to be just fine, they meet the fifteen percent requirement, not always, but most frequently, uh, you have a number of examples in your packet, but even those are a fraction of all of the ones that we looked at. And what we found were, the quantity of, of windows didn't necessarily correspond to the aesthetics of the home, you could have a house that didn't look all that great, that had a lot of windows and vice versa. You, we also found that one of the desires was the idea to place We also found that one of the desires was the idea to place... have as many windows on the street for the sake of general security for the community. And what we found on that is that there's really not a lot of documented evidence that that improves security. A variety of different reports that are out there that talk about neighborhood security, none of them identified this as a means of actually achieving that. And I think to look at it maybe in a different way, if you look around Anchorage at the neighborhoods that have the narrow lots, that have fewer windows, they typically have fewer crimes, actually, than neighborhood... older neighborhoods that may have higher percentages of windows that are available to the street. I don't say that that corresponds exactly, but that's really just the point, is that there are a lot of things that contribute to neighborhood security, and the presence of windows is only one, and perhaps a minor one at that. So, the thing that windows really impacts is affordable houses for entry-level people, is that to make affordable houses, we have to develop narrow-lot designs. And within those narrow-lot designs, for the homes to be marketable in Anchorage, they really have to have two-car garages. And when you have a narrow lot and a two-car garage, you cannot get many windows onto it. And so, that's one of the things we tried to address. There's a lot... A great deal, I think, of a great deal more evidence now than at the time Title 21 was being written, on the impacts of regulation on the cost on home prices. And it's really pretty clearly documented. It can range from 25%, 26% of the cost, in some cases, to even more, depending on the city that you're in. So, the impact of our regulations on the affordable homes, which are very clearly identified in the comprehensive plan as being desirable, the need for developing narrow-lot sites, the need for developing affordable homes, is very closely related to the ability to build homes on narrow lots, which impacts windows. So, what we did was we dropped it back to what was already determined by the Assembly earlier this year. We've maintained it at the 10%, but we've provided for a 7% one for very narrow homes. And we've added requirements for other things, like trim and paint color... Changes in color, changes in texture and trim, as an example, to address some of those situations. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Schonthal? Any questions at all before I go to public hearing? Mr. Spring?
Yeah, thank you. On page six, there's discussion in the staff packet about H, narrow lots, small home reduction, the window size. Let's see, can we reduce to 7% provided the homes with 500 square feet or less? Do I... I don't understand how that's calculated. 500 square feet, it sounds like a lot to me. It doesn't sound like a narrow lot. You calculate the square feet facing the street by the new definition, which is from the sill plate to the top plate, right? Say that's... I don't know what it... It could be 10 feet, I suppose, but probably more like 8 feet, and I'm not a builder. So... But if it's 10 feet, that would be 50 feet. It would be the width of the house, so 10 by 50 would be 500 square feet. 50 is not a narrow lot. I don't understand... Am I miscalculating it, or what? What's the problem here?
I do not believe that you're miscalculating that. I mean, I think that it is still probably a reasonable-sized home. It's a single-family, one-level home. The quantity that we came up with was one produced through kind of a committee of people attempting to arrive at the right number. So, I would... I guess I could open that one up, but I still think that at 500 square feet, we would end up being...
Seems to me through the chair that that just basically reduces all single-family homes in a standard subdivision to 7%. I wouldn't call it narrow lot, small home reduction.
As soon as you get into a two-story home, though, I think you would be beyond that.
That's true.
But if I could just piggyback, we're not talking about the lots at all. We're just... There's nothing that defines the lot in that statement. It's just a percentage, it's just the facade itself. That's how I...
Well, it says narrow lot.
Yeah, but it doesn't define narrow lot.
Small home reduction, and I just... You don't... You believe that that's a narrow lot?
No, I just... If it's for narrow lots, we ought to say what the lot is, not what the building is. That's just my opinion.
Well, it's by definition not going to be a narrow lot, if it's 500 square foot is the requirement. I just think it's going to be... It's just basically... We might as well say, let's just be honest, if you want to reduce it to 7% on a single-family standard ranch home, let's do it, but let's not make an exception that it's a small lot or narrow lot.
Yeah. Yeah, frankly, I think all of this is reducing it to the point where even frankly, having to read all this is wasted energy for what the end result is.
Well, I don't disagree with the analysis, and I like the photos and everything, and I think it's very interesting. But also, one other follow-up question to the chair. The last sentence says additional requirements apply for variation in materials, trim, and articulation, additional requirements. So, is that in this ordinance, or is that going to be delivered separately?
It's in code right now.
Oh, it's in the code right now? Okay. And that's the 2107110D4C then? Okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we go to public testimony? I have a feeling there will be some afterwards, but seeing none, I'd like to open the meeting up to public testimony, remind people to state and spell your name for the record, and if you're an individual, you get three minutes. If you're representing a specific group, you get five.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Dan Coffey. It seems like I've devoted a good half of my life to Title 21. I wanted to say that I really appreciate the opportunities that you're going to afford for amendments and changes as we discover these things, and I also compliment staff on bringing you basically three or four... You know, it's inasizable where you can deal with it and address it, and it'll go to the Assembly. The idea of the limitation was something I opposed. It should never have been limited. And then when we lost two years for the opportunity, now we're restoring that and allowing these to come more frequently. I think that's just really, really critical. Then you can get in the debate on the substance of the particular things being brought forward, but you're not so limited that we can't even address them. So, I very much favor that. I also read the public comments, and one of them said that there's no guarantee of a public hearing in the code... Under the code. Well, you're not adopting an ordinance... You or the Assembly is not adopting an ordinance without a public hearing, and you aren't going to make recommendations without a public hearing. So, I'm not quite sure where that came from, but it was indicia of a lack of understanding of this process. And I will say one last thing. The things like the size of the windows and these other issues, the garages and all that, those were all discussed for years and years and years, literally, at numerous Title 21 committee meetings and by this body, which has revisited the code and the drafting of the code many, many times. So, there's... I can't imagine that anyone is uninformed. There may be disagreement about what people think is appropriate, and there was, if you read the ones from Airport Heights, they were worried about the security questions with the window size and so on and so forth. But I agree with Terry and the staff that the most important thing on the window size is, is it something that's going to be a heat pump, or is it going to be something that's going to put a lot of cold air into the house? So, I urge you to support these things and bring it on, and I'll be at the Assembly meeting when they come up, and I will again urge them to adopt them and whatever. So, I thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you, Mr. Coffey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Karen Tasek-Michelson. I'm a home builder and a residential designer, and I'm also representing the Home Builders' Association. We've spent a lot of time working with staff, who has just been fantastic, on hearing our point of view for us, both home builders and home designers, to make these few changes. So, we will continue to work together with staff all through the rest of this year and hopefully the next, and continue to tweak the small portions of Title 21 that are just either mistakes or oversights. So, we appreciate your support and hope you'll agree with all of these and move them through for us. Thank you.
Great.
Mr. Chair, fellow members of the board, my name is Paul Michelson, M-I-C-H-E-L-S-O-H-N. Been a general contractor in Anchorage for approximately 40, 43 years. I commend the work that Mr... That Terry and the volunteers of the industry have combined together to make changes in Title 21 better. We've been sitting on the Board of Anchorage Home Builders for approximately 18 years, been a member of the Bidding Board of Appeals and Adjustments for the City of Anchorage, and currently sit on the Bidding Review Board for the City of Anchorage. And when the Title 21, as Mr. Coffey stated, was put together, we in the industry knew that there'd be challenges and changes needed in the future. And this is Schonthal... Schonthal has come together with volunteers from the industry, and they've combined together, and they've created changes that I think are much needed in the industry, and I think they're going to make it a better code to work with and adopt. And I recommend that you approve the changes that have been presented to you tonight, and I think we move forward and work together, and it's going to be a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michelson, while you're there, could you speak to kind of where the... You know, we heard the question earlier about the narrow lot or the small... Could you speak to the 500-square-foot number?
The 500-square-foot, the way I understand it, is the facade of the house. It's the area of the front of the house. A 50-foot lot is, in my opinion, is a narrow lot. Built on lots that are 35 feet wide, 40 feet wide, and they're really narrow. But when you get a 50-foot-wide lot, it's just teetering on narrowness. But what they're talking about, the 500-square-foot, is the width and the height of the facade, excluding... Am I correct, the gable end? Excluding the gable end of the house. So, that's where your 500-square-foot comes into effect. So, it's 7% of the facade of the house.
And you have a sense of... I mean, that's how I understood it as well, but you have, you know, again, 500... What's a 500... What's the... Were the elevation of the front of the house is 500 square feet, notwithstanding the gable or however the count... Like, what kind of house is that? What are we talking about?
If it's a ranch, it'd be a very narrow ranch, but a very long ranch. If it's a two-story, you probably have...
We can do the math, but it's... Your height is...
Right, you probably have about 700 square foot on a two-story.
Okay.
And on a ranch, you probably have about 450 to 500 square foot of facade on the front.
Okay.
But it is a narrow lot. It's not...
You just... I personally was curious as to why we just didn't define the lot, but I presume what that means is in a condominium situation where you really don't have a lot, but you just have a building pad, you're really trying to describe the building rather than the lot itself.
That is correct.
Okay.
I believe that was the intent, but staff can answer that.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony.
Appreciate your time.
Hello, my name is John Rankin. I'm a residential designer. And to... It just so happens, if you look on... If you have one of these, on page seven, I designed that for one of the major builders. The question was, they were asked by real estate people, basically, what people were wanting in this particular subdivision. A lot of you folks might be familiar with that particular house. They wanted a two-car garage with a little ranch, and under the way the code was the rewrite, that wouldn't have... You couldn't do that house, if you can see what page seven is. This cute little house, there's a couple of them that are built. And there's other problems, a lot of unintended consequences by the new Title 21, but I thought I'd help that out as being the one that did that. And to take... Getting rid of that, you know, the way they're helping out, Mr. Schonthal, and the people have been great working with us, and we have to get this to a point where we can work with the... In the design community and the home-building community. That's pretty much all I have to say in this.
Sir, one question. Can you spell your last name for us?
Rankin, R-A-N-K-I-N.
Thank you. And on the... Since you pointed out the image that you've provided, so with the windows in the garage and the sort of windows in the door and the transom, does that meet 7% calculation?
Yeah, I think... I didn't figure that out. I just admitted that. No, it's about 7%. They don't allow the windows in the garage. They haven't been. Under the Title 21, where they wanted 15%, it wouldn't have... Couldn't have flown, you couldn't have been...
Well, and that is one of our amendments here, is we're...
Right.
Getting rid of the omission of counting the garage windows, I believe.
Right.
But you know, with now counting the garage windows and the door, do you get to 7%? And if that an example? Or is that your intent, Mr. Schonthal, by showing that?
It is. That's the intent of showing that.
So, that meets 7% with the transom window and the windows in the doors and the windows in the garage?
It does.
Okay.
And by going to the plate, by, you know, measuring the elevation area to the plate from floor to plate, that really helps, too.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony.
Okay.
My name's Chuck Homann, President of Homann Incorporated. I'm a general contractor, primarily do residential remodeling, major additions, and occasional custom home. I support the passage of the proposed changes here. I've been involved in this for over a decade in meetings, and, you know, past Assembly people said, "The document was poorly written, and there's a lot of corrections that need to be made, but too much time and effort's been put into it. We must pass it, we must put it in place." And so, we need to retain the ability to make the necessary corrections. One impact that this new Title 21 has had on my clients to a negative is the limitation of the 50% of the garage. I had a client that wanted to do a 1,100-square-foot garage. They had a 1,600-square-foot home, so they're... I told them, "You're only allowed to have an 800-square-foot garage, and you have to get rid of your storage shed." We... I ended up giving over a proposal to build a 200-square-foot addition to their home, so they'd have 1,800 square feet, and then do a 900-square-foot garage, because they wanted to park their snow machines and four-wheelers inside a garage instead of leaving them out potentially being stolen and unsecured. And another client had built a new home for, and when we went in for the land-use permit to build his detached garage, we got turned down. And, you know, we had to get rid of his storage shed to build his garage, get the permit. And he said, "You know, if I hadn't known this, I would have just built a bigger house." And to require, you know, people to build a bigger home so they can have the garage that they want, you know, is just wrong. I had a real estate agent that has some R3 property, you know, this isn't part of the ordinance here, but he wanted to build a 1,000-square-foot garage with a 1,000-square-foot condo. These Alaskans have their toys. It's an Arctic climate, and they want... They got their snow machines, their four-wheelers, or they do woodworking, and they want a garage to do things in. Yet if you want a 1,000-square-foot condo now, you've got to have a 2,000-square-foot... I mean, 2,000-square-foot primary residence to have a 1,000-square-foot. So, I, you know, would like to see that changed, too, but that really doesn't impact me as a contractor, you know, but my clients, you know, they do woodworking. There's a lot of uses for the garage besides car storage. Like I said, people have, you know, just a lot of things in Alaska, and, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Could you spell your name for me, sir?
H-O-M-A-N.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your testimony. Anyone else wishing to testify?
Good evening. My name's Ron Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N, representing... I'm the Government Activities Co-Chair for Anchorage Home Builders, and also I consult on the side and bring a lot of permits into the city. These changes were not taken lightly by the administration. We've done many hours working with them, finding solutions, coming together with options to make sure that the language and everything didn't have little subtleties that maybe not catch all these things that we were trying to do and create more problems. So, in working with the staff, both Hal and Terry, every other week, we've been meeting for almost six, eight months... for almost six, eight months or something like that now, I think, something like that. And that process has been back and forth. And there's been some proposals come forward and say, oh, this'd be really cool to kind of try this, but then you get into it and you start really looking at it, say you can't do that. My background, obviously, is, some of you may not know, but I was building official for eighteen years here in Anchorage and I've been working at, on the government side, now I'm on the other side. And so, I mean, I understand all those aspects when it comes to the administration, having to make sure that these are enforceable and follow up on it and make sure that there's not loopholes developed. So, we kind of really went over that and we'd, we'd sit one topic and we'd hit it and we'd hit it for three, four meetings and go over that. And then they, we'd go out into the, the industry or out into the field and Terry did a lot of research going out in the field. We took pictures of buildings, we calculated everything with regard to ones that looked really nice, people have talked about and commented, ones that, that may not be, you know, I think that were tried to be affected by the changes in Title 21. And so, we found those adverse effects that, that were created by some of those changes. And I think this language really helped clean up being able to build, but also be able to, to keep the aspects of what the Title 21 was created. And, and at the end of the day, I think that using it daily, using it with the staff, meeting all the time, we've also, you know, on my side coming in, everybody used to always use generalizations, say, we need to fix this and this is the problem. Well, here we dealt with specific issues and we made the industry give us specific examples and, and some of those pictures were in there. And I think that Terry provided a lot of different samples that we did. So, it's a process that, that I think has went very well. Did everything in there that both sides brought up. I mean, after going through it, some made it, some didn't. So, we tried to, to get this and we're, we're going to continue that effort to try to put small succinct corrections that help make sure things are clear, so they're enforceable, that we can design to them and all those type of things. And this was the first process that I think the administration, I, I obviously, in, in the first one that went just directly to the assembly, we helped put that together with an assembly person. In this case, we all felt the same way when we got to this meeting. It needs to come through the normal chain of command, it needs to come through planning and zoning commission, it needs to go to the assembly. So, we were definitely engaged with working with the administration. And I think this is a byproduct of a, a really clear, precise, corrected fix that we can actually use in the industry and actually, I, I believe the city can also enforce it in a way it makes it easy for planner view. It makes the questions that have been going on be cleaned up. And so, the, the big part of, I think, putting more change possibilities in the future, I mean, it's not like we're, you know, we've been working on this for six months and we've put one forward. So, it's not like they're wanting to go every two weeks and you guys see them every couple of meetings, but the intent is, we might run up against those things that we need to get changed and it might be important to go more than twice a year for the industry to move and also the administration to be able to enforce correctly. So, we appreciate the process, we want to follow the process and, and I think that you can tell, there's, there's a lot of people that have worked on it that have been spending time, including a member of the assembly that's been in those meetings with us as well that, and they've interchanged and God, John Willington has given us a lot of input with regard to the creation of Title 21. So, I think it's been a great process and hopefully is a good document that we can move forward and allow the industry to have a little bit clearer path and then the city be able to enforce it pretty cleanly.
Great. Thanks, Ron, for your testimony. Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Okay, hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Any questions, additional questions for staff before I ask for a, a motion? Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
Oh, yeah, just to staff, I'm looking through the Title 21, the table of dimensional standards for residential districts. Am I correct, it's, all, all the residential districts have at least a minimum of fifty feet width, with the exception of R3 and R4, which allows for thirty-five-foot widths, I believe. It's a thirty, thirty-five or so, yeah. Or twenty, I guess, in the R4A. Would you, so, given the fact that every, every zoning, residential zoning district has at least a fifty-foot width, would you say that a fifty-foot width is a narrow lot?
Um, would, the thing is, is that about a fifty-foot lot is that, that's actually pretty standard for our downtown lots. And the thing that's different to me in assessing those is the difference between a two-story home and a one-story home. A one-story ranch on a fifty-foot wide lot with five-foot setbacks on either side means it's forty feet of house frontage and then the, you subtract the garage door, the, a, a double-wide garage door off of that. And you have, I mean, the garage door comes into the, the overall width area that you're dealing with, but the, under the new, you can add windows into that, under the old, you could not. In, in other words, you could count windows in the new, under this new system, but garage windows are going to be relatively small. Most people aren't going to want to put windows into a space that simply is going to be a heat sink. So, a lot of people have shafts, others in our group actually noted that they probably spend more time in their garages than they do in the, their bedrooms. So, the idea that that's not a valid place to look out onto the street might not be appropriate. But the, in answer to your question, is a fifty-foot width lot a, a narrow lot? It's a pretty standard lot in the, inside the community, but it really comes down to single-story versus double-story. And I think that there's potentially some wiggle room on taking a look at what, what a reasonable width is. What we're really trying to deal with are the narrower lot homes on this.
And through the chair, I, I don't want to just get into discussion with you, but I, I mean, I agree that that's, I see how that could be a problem. And that's a cute little house here and on this narrow lot. And this picture shows me that is a narrow lot. I've seen these houses and this is a thirty-five-foot wide house lot here. And it makes sense for this. I mean, it's particularly since you have design standards and it has to be done. I can see that, but I just don't see it applicable to a fifty-foot wide lot. I mean, that's my neighborhood.
But John, if your, if your, if your house is thirty-five feet, it's because it's on a fifty-foot wide lot. If your house is thirty-five feet, it's because it's on a fifty-five, fifty-foot wide lot?
With five-foot setbacks, right. It could be forty-foot, yeah.
Right.
This one, I'm looking at the picture though, this one's, I've seen this, this is not a, on a fifty-foot lot. This looks like a picture of something on a thirty-five or forty-foot lot on page seven. I mean, there's, I think the intent was to allow something like that to have a lower, but I think unintended consequence is that you're going to allow a standard subdivision with fifty-foot lots to go down to seven percent.
Hmm.
And if you're going to do that, we should consciously do that and not just let it be an unintended consequence.
Just, and I would just ask, you also recognize there's a lot size and then there's a pad size in a condominium project. So, your lot means nothing, right? But you're, you have a buildable area. Mr. Spinelli.
I guess I just wanted to kind of point out a couple of things for John's benefit. Is fifty-foot wide lot is the average lot width, but in cul-de-sacs, you'll off, they, you know, they take the average. So, you'll end up with twenty-five-foot wide houses. So, you do, and then also in PUD or cluster developments, you'll end up with thirty-five-foot lots. So, you can have skinny houses and then your, you know, your open space that's required by that type of planning. So, you end up with thirty-five-foot lots and twenty-five-foot wide homes. So, so that's kind of just one kind of tidbit that maybe you weren't quite consider, so...
No.
But that's pretty common for us to be building on those things.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spinelli. Any other questions to staff? What's the will of the body? Mr. Strike.
I'll go ahead and take a stab at this and I'll read this. On the case of, in the matter of case two zero one six zero one zero one, petitioner municipality of Anchorage. I move for approval on ordinance amending the Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, new code subsection twenty-one dot zero-two dot twenty-one zero B dash dot five Title 21 text amendments. Twenty-one dot zero-five dot zero-one-zero table of allowed uses to add duplex as an allowed use in the R4 district. Twenty-one dot zero-five dot zero-seven-zero D dot eight to allow larger garages on larger lots. And twenty-one dot zero-five dot zero-seven-zero D dot twenty to allow private aircraft hangars at legal airstrips and subsection twenty-one dot zero-seven dot one-one-zero C dot three to establish minimum areas required and method for measuring window area. I will be supporting the amendments or the motion. I think there's a combination that we have worked to correct unintended consequences, but as well as clarify past intent, which I think addresses Mr. Spring's issues. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Strike. Your motion seconded by Ms. Barker. Anyone else wishing to comment on the motion? I'm going to, I'm going to break one second and I'm going to ask staff, I neglected to say earlier, but page twenty, section three, C, that's proposed for deletion. Could you just tell me why that flexibility is being removed?
The reason why the flexibility was being moved is that when we took a look at, at examples of building homes, i- if we were going from fifteen percent down to ten percent, it just wasn't, there was no, no positive reason to add additional drops in, in windows for that. And a second reason for that was that if in fact the, the stated goal of this whole window thing to begin with is for eyes on the street and for aesthetics basically on the street, for our community benefit, then allowing that, that window placement could be put on the other side of the house, provided you're already providing fifteen percent, doesn't make very much sense to us as a community. I mean, you could put more windows on that side if you want to, that's entirely your choice. But to grant a, an exception that allows you to take windows from the front to put it on the backside doesn't support any of the basic premises for the, the intent of the ordinance in the first place. And that's why we were considering doing that.
And I, and I, I'm not in a position to offer any kind of amendment here, but I, what I would simply say is your work here with home builders has been primarily geared at single-family homes and, and townhouse development, not multifamily. And I have built multifamily where a side of the building is, which is primarily hallways, stairways, mechanical and those sorts of things, want a larger structure that sometimes it is, in fact, if you're not putting living on that, for example, a side of a building along Muldoon Road and, and where we have put windows at the ends of hallways, but not much else and have not been able to meet ten percent there. And so, I would just argue that I think your examples have been towards a certain type of building and because we don't see a lot of multifamily, you're maybe not looking at the multifamily developments quite the same way. So, again, I think I've used that clause before and I've used it because not only did I not get to fifteen percent, but I didn't get to ten percent.
Um, to the chair, one thing I would note is that there is a clause. The, the reason, one of the reasons why we considered this, and we've actually incorporated now into both the single-family as well as multifamily, is that at the director's option, the director can grant a, a variance from that ten percent for one of the facades not facing the street. And the intent there is that in, in our looking at homes around Anchorage, there were almost none. It was almost zero percent that where they meant the percentage on one street face, they almost never meant it on the other. And it's just the way homes and multifamily buildings are set up. Like you said, there's stair, there's stairways at one end. On single-family homes, it's oftentimes the garage that's on the one end of the, the site that might be facing the other street and there may not be any windows in it at all. In fact, there frequently aren't. But the intent is that with the ability of the director to take a look at that second facade and make a reading, including not having any windows at all, that there's a, there is a, a safety net there to be able to examine exactly the kind of situations you talk about.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Showenthal. Good with that. Back to the, to the main motion. And anyone else wishing to comment on the, the main motion? Please vote. And that ordinance passes. I, I would like to state that I do appreciate the process through which this, this amendment has been offered. I think you really don't get into the details by reading code until you have a real prod- product in front of you and I think it's good to have multiple parties at the table to work through these issues. I do especially support the notion of not limiting amendments. I think that if you identify a problem, you ought to fix the problem and not be somehow masochistic in the, in the meantime. So, with that, this moves on to the assembly for their discussion. Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break before the last ordinance in front of us. I, I'm going to just wait for Spring and then we'll bring the, what, what I wanted him to also hear is that you all received a invitation to a work session with the plan, or with the assembly on the land use plan map. Could you just make sure that you either accept or, or say that you're not available just so that the city has account and is aware of what you're doing? It is, I don't have, I don't remember the date. Seventh of October, it's a Friday. And, yeah, so the seventh, it just, so staff's having, oh, yeah, it says Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan, and that's what it says. I guess it's the 2040 plan on the 2020 plan, but never mind. But it, I, just, and generally speaking, Brandon is, or, uh, the staff is having a tough time getting people to respond. If you're like asked about whether you can make it or not or something, just, just if you could, you know, respond to those as, as much as you can. Go ahead, Brandon.
Do we know if there's going to be burritos?
Request for burritos.
I thought we had a menu.
I assume it's a new, okay. Last case in front of us, case twenty-sixteen zero-one-zero-three, municipality of Anchorage, ordinance amending municipal code Title 21, twenty-one oh five use regulations to include stormwater sediment management facility as newly identified use in table twenty-one oh five one and other changes as indicated. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, to the chair and, and the commission. Staff was originally approached on this by the project management and engineering department. And the, the, this particular use was, was originally identified in qua-, and put into the use designation as the, a snow storage facility. The problem was that in the end, it, the requirements, the, the use-specific requirements that are associated with the snow storage weren't really appropriate to what was going on here. So, there was another attempt to try to identify a use that was really closer to it maybe and, and in the end, it, it really became apparent that there may be multiple locations where these are located in town, that this is not likely to be the only one and that the, it would be worth our while to establish an actual use category for this specific use, just so that we could a- address the use-specific needs that are associated with it. So, a- as you go through what we've identified, it, we've identified it's being allowed in the R5, R6, R7 zones, the B3 zone, and then all of the industrial zones. And it's a conditional use in all of the residential zones that it's in, in the B3 zone. And it is a site plan approval, administrative site plan approval in the IT zone. So, it, the intent is to kind of cut back on the red tape associated with it being situated in an eye, in the industrial zones, but require that, just like we do with mineral, you know, with extraction, mineral extraction or re-natural resource extraction, that sort of facility or snow storage site in the, in the more... the more susceptible zones like the residential ones, there is a requirement for that conditional use. So questions that came up early, you guys worked pretty hard to pin down, Melinda too, on some of these things. But the questions that were, that had come up were things like buffering and what kind of things can be placed here. And I think she covered a considerable amount of that. But as you have the opportunity, I think, to take a look through, we provide the definition, then we provide the use-specific standards, including location, minimum lot size for it, the, the materials that are allowed to be actually deposited and placed at these locations. And it, it withholds the ability, for example, like A WUDE use anything that's septic or anything that's, you know, concrete slurry, any of a variety of things. We really try to maintain it so that this is really addressing that stormwater sediment that's sucked up from something like 3,600 catch basins. And we've identified a required setback from, from property boundaries. The maximum height of these gravel piles can be 15, but they'll rarely be that high. They generally have kind of a cover that goes over them. The intent is that they'll drain out, but they don't get to be rained on. And the, it provides for the material, the runoff to be collected and stored, or at least be sent to where it'll be remediated. So, for example, I think Melinda touched on that, it'll actually go into the sanitary sewer and not in a storm sewer. So the second piece that we've included in this one is another one that came up from PMNE, and that's that under new Title 21, we're required to have the vertical six-inch curbs on all of our streets now. And that included the residential cul-de-sacs. And the guys who drive the snowplows came back and said, that's really a big problem in cul-de-sacs. That if you're trying to make those radiuses and it's not clear exactly where the boundary is, that you hook on the edges on the vertical curb where the, the side ramps are to driveways, it's really easy to hook the blade on those, and it causes damage, it'd cause damage to equipment as well as potentially to drivers. So they'd asked if we would take a look at, at allowing the mountable curb, the roll curb, as most of us probably think of it, which is the most common one. I did actually go back and using aerial photography, I identified 154 cul-de-sacs in Anchorage, which is most of them. I bet it's probably 90% of the cul-de-sacs. And of those, only nine actually have attached sidewalks. And the argument for having the vertical curb in the cul-de-sacs is that cars are always just going up over that roll curb and parking on the sidewalks. And in what I found, I didn't find a single case where that actually happens. And I think where the problem really exists is that people pull into those driveways and they're maybe two-car deep or whatever, and they park over the sidewalk in their driveways. And that's not a problem that gets fixed by vertical curbs or roll curbs. It just has to be enforced that cars don't get to park on the sidewalks. So that's the second piece that's in here, relatively minor, I think, but one that I think is, is not just something that should go to the Assembly. Changes like this that come up should be addressed, I think, by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so we've combined these two. And that's my report.
Thank you. And Terry, is it just, is it, is it one motion that you're asking for that then?
It is one motion.
It's one ordinance, even though these are multiple actions?
It's one ordinance.
Okay, very good. Mr. Walker.
In the case of 2016-0103, I move to approve the, with department recommendations, if any.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to get you to hold that for a second. Just a little formality here. I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Walker, your, your motion.
Point of order, I have a question, I want to ask the staff a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Staff, on page seven, I want to get out of here too, so I don't want to belong this. And it's a good ordinance, it's a good ordinance. But on page seven, the screening, am I interpreting that right? It says, an earthen berm, a site of securing, screening structure, at least six-foot, feet tall, buffer landscaping L2 or some combination of these. Can I interpret that to mean that you can only, you only have to put in, at a minimum, if you wanted to, a six-foot tall fence?
I think the way that this is written now, I think that that is an accurate statement. I think that the, the fence along the property line, however, there's a setback requirement for the, the material itself. In this particular case, the one that you reviewed tonight, you know, there's, there's existing vegetation, but I think that's a valid point, that maybe what you need is, the six-foot, the six-foot fence is part of the, the buffering landscaping, the L2 landscaping. And, and I think that the comment may be the, the problem there, I'm not sure.
Well, it just, it seems to me they aren't equivalent. I mean, you'd expect that there's a three-choice, that they'd be equivalent, the berm, buffer landscaping.
I think the intent there is that the landscaping goes with it.
Excuse me?
The intent, I believe, is that the landscaping goes with that six-foot fence.
Okay, well, if you'd look into that, I'd be satisfied, I think. Second question, the long-range planning recommended that the IM district be deleted as, as one of the zoning districts permitted, where this is permitted. Have you, you didn't, that's still included in this, so I'm assuming you disagree with that.
It's one that, that simply didn't get picked up. We actually have a new district coming, that's likely to come online for the, which is the AM, which is airport management, in which case it would be appropriate. But we can delete this from the IM one. It's an oversight on our part.
Okay. And then the, what about the Chugakigal River and Girdwood zoning districts? I'm assuming they will need this also. Is that, this is ordinance, allow this sediment management facility in those districts?
It does not yet allow those in those districts. We were specifically held off from the Girdwood district because they're going to be starting a review of their plan this fall. And the, part of the intent, even the garages, is an example, doesn't, isn't picked up in the Girdwood area, only because I think it's going to be open for discussion down there. And we don't want to include something for Girdwood without really getting an opportunity to go down and, and clear it with them through a little longer exercise. So.
Chugakigal River, then, through the chair?
Chugak, Chugakigal River, there may be a need for this. We don't have it in here right now. Most of that material is still brought back to Anchorage.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions. Thanks, John. Mr. Walker, can you restate your motion?
I move to approve case number 2016-0103 as proposed.
Thank you. It's seconded by Mr. Strike. Any, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think it's, it seems like a reasonable change to make, and I just, you know, it makes sense, and it seems to be consistent with, with the best interest of the development community, and in this case, well, half of it anyway, with PMNE's objectives, so.
Very good. Any other discussion? Please vote. I would just additionally say that in our discussion with PMNE today related to the rezone and conceptual stormwater management facility, many of the issues that are provided in this ordinance did contemplate, I think, a lot of the questions that were coming up. So I think it does tend to capture most of the potential issues. So with that, that is approved. And Mr. Walker, how about a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.